Hello, everyone. Welcome to a We Have Quorum special report. This is the Committee on Queer Stuff Subcommittee on Trans Things. So this week, I don't know if most of you have heard, but the state legislature in Wisconsin announced two bills that were anti-trans bills. And so I wanted to give you guys a little more information on that. And but first, let's get this meeting to order. I'm going to welcome Robin Schultz. Hello, Robin.
Hi.
Thank you so much for joining tonight in this special committee hearing.
Glad to get to you. Thanks for the invite.
Of course. So I had a chance to talk to Representative Melissa Ratcliffe earlier today. So it's about 12 minutes. We're going to go into that. And then we will come back and kind of break down what's happening this week and what you can look forward to or aim for in great regret to participate in. So we will be right back, but here is my interview with Melissa Ratcliffe. Representative Melissa Ratcliffe, thank you so much for joining us today. So we are talking about three different bills. Two were just introduced last week, SB 480 and SB 479. And then we will discuss also AB 377, which is the trans athlete bill. All of this came through really quickly, it seemed, very, very under the radar.
Yes.
We expect these things, but...
Right. No, yeah, they, I mean, there was really no, no whiff that they were coming out, right? And that's kind of how it operates, but we all knew they were coming, right? So, so while we were hoping that they wouldn't do these types of bills, they're basically predictable. And so that's why I worked with my colleague, Representative Ryan Clancy, to form a caucus, to panic, the transgender parent and non-binary advocacy caucus, to be prepared to fight back against these bills and show that we support our transgender and non-binary community and are here for, for you all and to support our youth. Because it's really important, right? Like to show that there are people in the Capitol that care, that see you, that see our youth and understand that everybody's entitled to basic human rights of being yourself. So.
Yeah. I find it so disconcerting that the Republicans keep coming after some of the most vulnerable people. And what SB 480 essentially says is that any person that they're going to cease healthcare, trans-affirming, gender-affirming care for any individual that's under 18. And also, I believe that in 479, that's the, that's essentially saying that if a doctor harms anybody during care, whether mentally or physically, that they can have a civil suit brought against them. Like, it's just, one, a gross overreach. And two, disturbing that a parent make this, exactly. And a parent can't make a decision with their doctor for the care that their child should provide, should receive.
Right. It's, it's not a doctor making this decision on their own. It's not a parent making this decision on their own. And it's not a child making the decision on their own, right? Like, this is a combination of a child saying who they are and want to represent themselves as to the world. And it's the parent understanding their child's needs and going to the doctor to, to get more information, to make the right decisions, healthcare decisions for their child, so that they don't have mental health issues. I mean, when you're, when you're being suppressed and not being able to represent yourself to the world as you are, that causes mental health issues. And the, the lack of information out there about transgender children, transgender people, and what happens with transitioning is, is unfortunate that, that people think that you can go to the doctor and get a surgery right away. That doesn't happen on anything unless it's an emergency where you have a bone sticking out of your body. I mean, there's no doctor that would perform the surgery the next time they saw the kid or right then. First off, it's a, it's a long process. The doctor makes sure that the child and the parent understand everything that's going on. And the parent needs to sign off on it before any surgery is completed before age 18. And that's how it is when you get your ears pierced too. If a child wants that before 18, right? You got to have the parent sign off. So, right, tattooing. Fortunately, my child didn't want a tattoo before 18, so. But it's, it's, it's a decision that should be between a parent, the child, and the medical professional. We don't need to have politicians in the doctor's office with people. And this, it all comes back to controlling people, which is why it goes to abortion access too, taking away that right for a person to have bodily autonomy. We're seeing them come after our kids now, and it's not okay. And we're going to keep fighting against it.
Thank you. You mentioned that there's not enough information, and I think there is way too much disinformation.
Yes.
Out there around transgender people's experiences. And if we know anything, is that if they come after our children, they're going to come after us next.
Exactly.
Where, where does this stop? And how do we impede this process for the Republicans who are trying to push through irresponsible and harmful bills?
Right. And they, they have more than 50 votes, right? So they can, can maybe pass what they, what they want to do. And it's really fortunate that we have Governor Evers, who has come out very strongly against these bills, these anti-trans bills, and says that he will veto any of these things that make it through. It's important that we hear from voices, though, in opposition, showing that it's not okay to put these forward and you can't just put them forward without any repercussions of people saying it's not okay. And we have more than a third of Assembly Democrats to stop any veto override as well. But the really important thing is the maps need to change. Gerrymandering affects so many different levels. And Gerrymandering, for those that aren't quite sure what that means, it's the districts are mapped out, made specifically for one party or the other to have more control, more majority. So you build in more Republicans into a district over Democrats. And, and with the, the way our, our digital access, like computers can design it so that they know exactly where to do the lines. And that's why we have Republican control of 64 Democratics, or 64 district seats, assembly seats, and only 35 Democrat seats. Even though statewide races, it's over 50% with Governor Evers and Josh Call and Secretary of State, those races. We're a more purple state than what our assembly currently reflects. And that's because of Gerrymandering, changing the map so that we can have fair elections, fair, yeah, elections, basically. For the people to decide based on the candidate and what their viewpoints and values are. That will do a lot in helping us to put forward actual bills that help our state rather than going after our youth. I mean, there's a lot of issues in our state right now that we should be focusing on rather than going after a marginalized community.
Housing.
Housing. Affordable and accessible childcare. Childcare is a huge issue. And we're sitting on this $4 billion surplus right now. But rather than focus on the real issues, we're going, the Republicans are going after our youth. And they won't stop at transgender kids either or transgender people, right? It's, they, they came, coming after the abortion access, reproductive healthcare. And so it's all about control, really. So we all need to keep fighting back.
Yeah. All queer people will be next in line. Marriage equality will be taken, like, if things go the way they are now, those things are real possibilities for Wisconsinites.
Yeah, it's, and that's scary. And that's why we all need to just keep working and pushing back. And all elections matter across the state and at the local level, too. School board races, village board, town board, city council, they're all important.
Let's pivot to AB 377, which is the anti-trans athlete or the trans athlete ban. There's a hearing this Wednesday that they announced right in the middle of us doing work about the bills that they introduced last week. They announced a hearing on, for Wednesday at 10:00 AM at the Capitol. And tell us what you're expecting from this hearing.
Well, if it's based on previous bills that were brought forward in other sessions, there'll be a lot of pushback on them all and pushback from support, allies of our transgender community. And it's likely that there'll only be, each person will only be allowed a short time, like a minute or two, to give testimony in support of our transgender community and against these bills. They'll have their experts testify first, and they'll have the people in support of the bills testify first. But there is also going to be representatives testifying against it. I will be there along with some of my colleagues as well, pushing back against these awful bills. It's going to be a long day, but we do just, just know that there are people in the Capitol that do support the LGBTQ community. And we, we will all be stronger together.
Yes. Representative Ratcliffe, thank you so much for your time and your perspective on this. And we will touch base soon again.
Yes. Thank you for your work, Dina. Dina Nina, I love your name so much.
Thanks. So there we have it, my interview earlier today with Representative Melissa Ratcliffe. I'm grateful she took the time, you know, out of the blue really quickly to chat about it. By the way, in all of the, the comments, I have posted the Legistar or the, the link to the legislation that we're talking about, AB 479, AB, oh, I may have done that, AB, sorry, SB 479 and SB 480, which were introduced last week, which are bans on trans healthcare for minors. And then we've got AB 377 that is coming up for here. They're all coming up for hearing on Wednesday. AB 377 is the ban on trans athletes. Robin, I saw you shaking your head several times during that. And, and what are you, what are you thinking right now?
I think she hit it on the head again and again and again. I think, I think one of the things that has blown my mind about this, while we were in that coalition meeting on Friday, this stuff is breaking news. Four o'clock on a Friday for hearings at the beginning of the following week? That wasn't contrived. That wasn't a setup, but we're going to.
No, not at all.
But it seems so standard and so typical and so disappointing and so frustrating. But it's just going to drive us to action because we're not going to just go away.
Right. We've worked so hard to just be who we are for so long that we're not going back. We're not going back. Also, I want to thank my official co-host, Terry Bar, for joining in the conversation. If you are watching right now, we would love your comments. We'd love to interact with you. I pulled this together at the last minute because I believe it's important that we have coverage on this and, and start talking about it and mobilize everyone who can, can mobilize to come out on Wednesday in support of, of the trans community and making sure that, that we still have access to life-saving care and that people realize that rapid onset gender dysphoria is a myth. It is wrong. The processes set around going through transition care and gender-affirming care are not quick and easy. If I could have gone in the day I decided to get estrogen and have gotten estrogen that day, I would have been like, yes, thank you. This is not easy, and it doesn't happen overnight. And medical professionals are not doing irreversible surgeries on children that are under 18 without the permission of their family. And they are not doing it. They're not doing it.
I, I think that's a key point, and Dina Nina, I absolutely agree. Like, if I had walked into my local, you know, pharmacist or my general practitioner and said, I think this is what I want. Guess what I wouldn't have gotten that day? It took years and years to set that up, to open the doors to all this stuff, to get the referrals, to get started. And it was life-changing.
Yeah.
Months and a couple of dosage adjustments, all of a sudden, as a different person experiencing life through a different set of eyes that allowed me to find a voice, that allowed me to do things besides self-destruct and a slow and steady, you know, slow motion collapse. It was imperative. And I think back to, had I had access to, if there was a context to develop vocabulary, to have a conversation like the ones that so many people are able to have now, thanks to eyes being opened about what gender, gender actually is, what identity is and the importance of acknowledging it, my life would have been completely different. I could have spared myself thousands and thousands of hours and days of suffering. I could have spared people close to me the similar fate. I could have skipped years of antidepressant therapy.
And amen to that.
And lo and behold, there's a path forward. And, and I think to touch on the, like, concerns that we keep hearing, which are absolutely positively patently false about what gender-affirming care for minors includes. There's people who start puberty really, really early. There's a long proven track record of those meds slowing that down, retarding that from happening as nature would have it. Because it's awkward, it's uncomfortable, and all gender stuff aside, this is proven medicine. This is a path that has worked for many, many people. And having the opportunity to say, hold on, having that opportunity in conjunction with a team of medical practitioners, probably to include mental health professionals, a team of parents, perhaps worship leaders, there's a whole group of people that should come together to help navigate this decision, this difficult and challenging decision for a young person. It's difficult and challenging as an adult, and I have a care team, and they're amazing. And closing the door to that, you know, I don't want to get into Trevor Project numbers, but I think the outcome isn't going to be serving the greatest good for the most people, which I believe is what we're obliged to try to strive for.
I, I know. I, I, so the city and the county, Dane County and Madison, we passed transgender sanctuary measures earlier this year. And during those hearings prior to the, at the county board, there were religious leader after religious leader, family member after family member who came up and swore about how, not swore, but testified about how bad it was, that we're trying to change people, it's against God's plan. And I just, all I could think of are, was the children in those families that were running around untethered. And I thought, there is possibly one child in your family that may be gay or trans or queer in one way, shape, or form. And the damage that you are doing to them right now by showing up in this council room and spewing the misinformation, the hatred, and telling them that they are broken? I remember hearing that from the pulpit every day as a child. And there was not a day, okay, I'm going to say this. I am surprised I'm alive. And we can't say that S-word, but I will say that many people are going to suffer in silence and may not be with us, with your families, when you were spewing that hatred and that, that diatribe within your homes. Because they don't feel safe enough to tell you that they may be queer or may be questioning their gender. They don't feel safe. I just kept thinking, do you want that on your hands? Would you rather have your child be something that you don't agree with and live in your house than not exist any longer? Would the pain of losing your child be more than watching them become happy, healthy, well-adjusted adults?
And I think, as we see some of these other bills land in some of these other states, some of the things that are coming around with that in terms of like parental rights and parental notifications, like, Billy wants to be called Betty, and you haven't been told that yet? I'd say there's a real possibility that you're part of the problem, not part of the solution. Protecting these avenues for safe development, which is really what we're talking about here, seems like an imperative. And, and again and again, I think we have to keep going back to parental right to include them in the discussions. And as we get into what this entails and what this means and what this allows and doesn't allow, there's important questions about bodily autonomy. And this bodily autonomy stuff, again, like, whether we're talking about adults who have agency over their own condition, or that we're talking about minors who are in a partnership with their parents and the rest of their family and whatever other resources they're lucky enough to have access to, taking away that right, taking away their underage voices, doesn't feel like the right thing to do.
No, no. They're, they talk and espouse a need to protect children, but all they are doing is causing more harm. The bill is, they, they called it the Help Not Harm Bill. And I can't believe that they're not, that they are not truly aware of the harm that a measure like that will cause. I can't believe that they're not that aware. They just disagree with it, mostly from a religious basis. And, and then secondarily, from an uneducated, an understanding and unwillingness to, to understand the situation.
I agree. And I, I, I think it, I think it needs to be said that there are plenty of educators, there are plenty of medical practitioners, there are plenty of leaders in the faith communities that support these things, that believe that these things are valid and real and imperative to continue to work around and work with, not to stop, not to shut down.
Yeah. It's, I'm just, I, I guess I'm just flabbergasted that this is happening. So, look, we know that Governor Evers is going to veto it. However, from what Melissa Ratcliffe said, there's a good chance that they will ask for a repeal of the veto, veto, sorry, veto override. They possibly could have the votes for a veto override. I think it's unlikely that it would get overridden, you know? But I, I mean, there's a concern there. And these are things we have to talk about. And this is, this is the reality of how we have to show up every day. Ain't it exhausting?
It's wearing me down, but it's not going to stop me. And, and I, we've been kind of chatting throughout the day. Rearranging a pretty basic calendar, like all of us currently work with, took some work, and I'm really, really pleased that I was able to find the flexibility and cancel something to make myself available for a Wednesday. I think the Plan B, as it were, submitting written testimony is a really, really good option. I know not everyone is as lucky as me to be able to do what I was able to do and make time for this. And I hope that everyone who's listening can find one other person to contact and reach out to your legislators and reach out to the people on this committee. And there's good information about what to include in your note. And do it.
Yes.
It's long. It's not that big of a lift. It's an email. We can all find time to write one more email on any given day.
Yeah. Agreed. Just a real quick email. I oppose this. So we are, just one of the things I would love to encourage everyone to do. Make a phone call to your legislator's office and send an email. Do both. Say, this is irresponsible. This is gross overreach. Whatever wording you want to put in there, whether you agree with it or not, send an email to your legislators, letting them know how you feel about it. Engaging in the political discourse is most important now than ever. If you are a parent or a loved one of someone who is trans, especially if they're younger trans and queer individuals, I encourage you to find a way to make it out to events that are protesting. In addition to, in addition to sending those emails, letting people know on the street, this is what's happening. Sharing this video would go a long way. You can also subscribe to our, let me get all this stuff down here real quickly. Let me put this on here. It's sometimes hard doing both speaking and, I have a hard time speaking anyway. So we are on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube at WeHaveQuorumShow. On YouTube, it's WeHaveQuorum. You can find our channel there. I would love it if you would go subscribe and like. Subscribe, like, and comment. Everything that, any way you interact with us helps us out immensely. And we want to get the, the word out about these things that are happening, these attacks on our freedoms, these attacks on our children. Please, get involved any way you can, with whatever time you can, with whatever energy you can, even if it is just sending an email or a phone call to your legislator. You can also join our community on Reddit, r/WeHaveQuorum. Would love to have your input over there. Interact with us throughout the week. Have, send us questions. Send us videos of things that you think are funny or interesting or important to share. And we would love to have you over there and share the things that are on your mind as well as ours. Robin, with being in, so I'm in Madison. Didn't Milwaukee just pass something that was? Didn't Milwaukee just pass something that was, uh, comparable to a transgender sanctuary?
We absolutely were able to get that through at the county level two weeks ago. Um, I was able to attend. I heard some people came. I heard some people spoke for it. I heard some people spoke against it. But at the end of the day, it passed. It's pretty toothless. It's pretty toothless. And until we get wider protections, be they at the state level or ideally the Equality Act or something equivalent at the federal level, um, it's a step and it's one more little indication like this is okay. There's a place for you.
Yeah.
And it's, it's some rudimentary protections. And again, they're moderately toothless, but they're in place and it's an important step. And I think it's an important statement from the leadership at the county, saying that we're not going to tolerate this here.
Yeah. Absolutely. I, like, a lot of people were asking about our resolution that went through in, um, here in Madison and, and that's essentially what I said. It is primarily symbolic, but symbology is important. When we see ourselves in places of power, when we see ourselves, um, in a city that says you mean something to us or a county that says you mean something to us, there is power in that.
Yep, absolutely. And I'd like to believe that everyone who's paying attention is gonna be certain to be ready to express their dissatisfaction or their satisfaction when it comes time for the voting next year. It's going to be a maelstrom. And there's so much work to do, but I don't think anyone who cares is going to sit bypassively and say, whatever happens, happens. I won't.
I can't.
No.
What, what I will do and what I'm sure you will do is knock on doors, register people to vote. Um, talk to your legislators. I'm having meetings constantly with Assembly and Senate members. Um, Josh Call, the Attorney General. And, you know, we just got, had a chance to sit down with Secretary of State Godlewski and have some wonderful conversations. This is how we change the conversation is by getting engaged. Whether that is going to your neighbor and saying, hey, I would love it if you would, uh, call your Senator, your, your representative um, and let them know how you feel about this. It would be great. I'm planning on going through the country, hopefully registering people to vote, telling them stories, getting them engaged.
Yep, we have to. We have to. And, and all these things that we're doing, you know, they, they strengthen our communities. And by strengthening our communities, we eliminate a huge, huge section of the problems that our communities all face. We can find means to band together. If we can find mechanisms with which we can join forces and raise our voices in unison. We've got to get this stuff done. They can't keep trying to just squish us out with middle of the night meetings and announcement and announcements.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to share that, uh, from my co-host Terry Bar. Um, once again, if you're watching on YouTube, we will have links coming in for you in the description and the show notes once it's posted there. If you're watching on Facebook and, and Twitch right now, um, the links to the legislation is, are in the comments. So scroll down there. I will share, this is the one for, uh, SB four eighty. Uh, if I'm, if I'm correct, this one says that you can bring a civil lawsuit against a, uh, practitioner of healthcare who, uh, you perceive has harmed you mentally or physically or harmed your child. Really? And then SB four seventy nine says, um, if I'm, if I'm correct, um, I could have gotten them mixed around, but SB four seven, uh, four seventy nine is the one that I believe says that, uh, all gender-affirming care for minors must cease, even testosterone blocker or, you know, um, hormone blockers, no hormones. Fortunately, the small grace in this is that they carved out an exception for those individuals who are intersex. And it allows for a six-month, um, weaning off of, of, of that care so that the individual doesn't have, you know, trauma from sudden quitting of estrogen or, or other items. I, I, you know, it's just disgusting. And then this one once again was AB three seventy seven. That is the, uh, trans athlete ban. Look, children don't have, I, I just don't understand it. I let children play sports. They learn teamwork. They learn communication. They learn so much by being a part of a sports team. And if somebody is trans or queer, just let them play. Just let them play. I do not understand it.
Yeah, I don't either. And I, you know, Dina, I think back to a long time ago. I did, I dabbled in some sports activities and whatever was going on. Hooking up with some other partner usually took priority to winning the game. That doesn't diminish, like, guess what I wouldn't have given up in exchange for that trophy? That, that's such a hollow and false argument and such a ridiculous, ridiculous premise for some of these articles that are coming forward. Um, I, I, this, sports has a place. Sports has a place and, and it builds teamwork and it builds the ability to recognize the shortcomings of others and work with it to support them because by doing so, we learn how the team does better. Um, it's not really about winning and losing, although I think losing probably teaches more than winning.
I don't disagree. I'm, I rarely get super competitive at anything because I've always lost most things, you know? But I show up and I participate whether I enjoy it or not. And I learned so many things. One, I learned that I was a girl when we took our football picture in seventh grade. And I was the only kid smiling like I was so happy to be there. Like, I, okay, that, so small town in Texas. When I finally transitioned, I had several of the, of the older class people that graduated ahead of me, obviously I said older, um, that, um, were like, we always knew you were a girl. You always, you did our, you did our routines, you did our music, like, come on, if people who don't understand and don't agree with me, get it.
Yeah.
Anyone can get it.
Yeah, it's really that easy. Open your heart, open your mind, look and listen and you'll probably hear the message.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Robin, I think this is a nice place to, uh, wrap up. I am super grateful for you joining this committee meeting tonight.
Thanks for putting it together. Thanks for the invite. It was a pleasure and an honor and I look forward to seeing you Wednesday right early.
I will see you on Wednesday and I hope that everyone else will be able to join us. And if not, please engage with our content on Facebook. I know it's annoying. Everybody always says that. Facebook, Instagram, YouTube and wherever you can. And oh, you have a baby that needs attention.
It's about that time.
Robin Schultz, uh, great having you on tonight and I can't wait to see you on Wednesday.
Thanks, Dina. Thanks for coming out. I hope we're coming to this and see you.
Give them hell.
Stacks of emails, hours of voicemail. Let's do this.
Amen. Um, that's been our time. Thank you so much. Once again, thanks to Robin Schultz for joining us today. Terry, thank you for supporting even when you're not on the show tonight. Um, we are absolutely grateful for those of you who are going to, um, show up to the Capitol, call your representatives. And please, once again, go to Instagram, Facebook and YouTube, find We Have Quorum, like our page. And if you want to interact with us regularly, you can join our Reddit community, r slash We Have Quorum. Thank you so much. I'm Dina Nina and this meeting is adjourned.